Go ahead and get started tonight's work session. The first item on tonight's work session was placed on there by the mayor and also asked to be retracted by the mayor. So, we'll move on to item two, which is the discussion of the SCADA and Engineering Department, request of the mayor and Mr. Richard Peterson.
Where is Richard? Richard Peterson, are you in the building?[34.61][34.61](laughing) What I wanted to mention too, on the first part, is we've already met, since I've met with both Kevin and Robert, and then of course Jimmy and Jay, on two separate meetings that talked about some of the efficiencies that we could look at for the council agenda, we wanted to put into place with the help of Mike, our treasurer, and, you know, just show you what that would look like. That's why we pulled it, because it was, we said that would be the next step. So, it's not that we don't want to discuss it, it's just, we'll show you what that looks like and see if that would, you know, and the main part of taking some of the agenda items that have already been approved in a budget and not having to approve them again, which takes about 70% of the time on the council agenda, is that it's the time savings that happens within the city on day-to-day operation. After this council meeting today, on Wednesday, all of our department heads have to have in, this Wednesday, just in two days, everything that's going to be on the next council meeting. And basically, everything to do with purchasing that's already been approved in the budget has to be organized and timed within 26 meetings. And that is not the way most cities do it. Once a budget is approved, then everything within the budget, the only thing council sees is something is not in the budget, or if it's over budget, and that makes sense. So, it would, really, the time savings that frees up is just the day-to-day operation of the city. The savings there really can't be quantified, it would be enormous. And we're just looking at ways for best practices on ways that the City of Fairhope can do a better job. So, that we're going to do, just to show, instead of an agenda, what it looks like now, is a list of things that were purchases, purchased over the last two weeks, and then show really how much was saved, because you can't make a purchase if it's over budget. So, it's always either at budget or below. And then anything else that's on the agenda are just things that need approval that weren't in the budget. So, I think it's going to be really, you know, a better way to do things at the city.
Mayor, I think that the budget's a living document, and the reason it comes back is that, so we make sure that revenues are in line with what they think they are, and that we still need what we think we need, you know, if we're six or eight months into the year, because priorities may have changed. That's why it comes back. And I don't look at it as going on the next agenda, as two days from today. They need to be looking at this weeks and months prior.
No, no questions.
It needs to be put up 10 to 12 days prior before it goes on the agenda. It has nothing to do with our meeting being today, and then you only have two days to put it together.
No, I'm saying that no other city does it this way.
Well...
I mean, I think if no other city does it this way, we should look and see, well, maybe it's something we need to do that other cities don't.
And as far as the council meeting, we had 25 items on the last meeting, we finished...
It's not the council meeting we're trying to save title on, it's day-to-day.
Please don't interrupt me again. We went through 25 agenda items in 45 minutes in the last meeting, and, I mean, if that's about as fast as you can, you know, hope to get through that many items, and even if we reduced it by five or six, I don't have a problem spending 45 minutes on city business. So, is Richard, Richard, are you ready to go on to item two?
While he's coming up here, I want to mention that the time savings, like I said, it's not the council agenda, although saving time there can leave us more time to talk about planning and big issues that we need to talk about. The time savings is the day-to-day. It's Richard Peterson's time. It's Richard Johnson's time. It's everybody's time, day-to-day.
Well, Mayor, I'm very aware that you don't like our purchasing procedures or processes or policies, and they're in place for very good reason. It's checks and balances, and that's why we always get, after it's a budget item, it comes back for one last bite at the apple, even if, you know, it's under budget, or if it's, you know, already an item that's been approved in the budget. Those are the reasons why. And I think it's been pretty efficient, and I think it, I think it works well, and I'll oppose any attempt to change it. So, go ahead, item two, please.
I don't have one right now.
Well, you know, if we're talking about an engineering department, and we're talking about improving the SCADA system and the mapping system, I mean, it should seem obvious that with the growth that we have coming, and the ability to work with the engineers that are working with these developers, we've got to have a model of our system. We've got to have the SCADA network in place, and continue to improve that, so we can monitor and address issues that come up, whether it be a storm event, or whether it be normal operational issues from mechanical electrical failure. We just, we lack the capability to be able to be on top of that on a daily basis.
And, well, I'll add to that, you know, that we, when we're looking at the organizational charts, and that's really what we're going to try to do during this budget process, is, you know, just looking at it from scratch, and what others have in place, to see how we can become more efficient. You know, not having really any component in any of the utilities that does the planning as a priority. Here are the priority and needs that happen, that would be identified through SCADA, mapping, and really just the engineering level, not the high-end engineering level of Richard Peterson or Richard Johnson, but the planning level, and this ties into public works as well, but most importantly, utilities with all of our infrastructure.
Well, and you have the resources to inspect work as it's going in. If we're going to accept work, whether it be a drainage system, a road system, a utility system, we should be able to inspect that, and we should have time to do that. We do not have time to do that today, and we wind up inspecting it after the fact, and that's not the best practice that we should take. The reason I was trying to set up an engineering department in general was so that we could share that resource with planning, we can share that resource with public works, and we can take advantage of it in utilities, because I just think we've got to start somewhere. And that seems to be the first logical step to moving that part of the operation forward.
Council, Thomas.
Yeah, I mean, to see the engineering department come back up, you know, it was proposed in last year's budget, and it's been discussed several times, and I've said every time, I'll support hiring an engineering firm to do the, do the mapping one time, and then you've got to, you don't need a department. We've got a, if you've got a technician, he can update it whenever improvements are done, or whenever something's changed. But I'm not, you know, I'm not in support of the engineering department for the City of Fairhope.
Okay, well, that's your prerogative. I disagree with you, obviously, but that's, you certainly have an opinion, and I appreciate that.
Richard, could you explain for maybe us non-engineers, you know, I mean, when we talk about SCADA and mapping, are those terms interchangeable? I mean, is that the same?
No, it's two separate systems. The SCADA system is a supervisory data acquisition and control system. And basically, at each, at each system we have, that would be an electrical substation, it'd be a wastewater lift station, it'd be a water plant, it'd be an elevated tank, all the infrastructure that basically supports the distribution or collection of our utilities, has monitoring equipment established in it, so that we know what it's doing and how it's operating. If you develop that system to the degree that I think we need to develop that system, you can start to have maintenance alarms that give you full warning of any imminent failure. That may be from a check valve being stuck, and one pump overrunning itself during a pumping cycle. It could be a sewer line that's clogged up and not allowing any water to get to the, to the lift station itself. So, you can have alarms from a lack of runtime, or you can have an alarm from too much runtime. And it gives you a chance to react to those issues before they become problems.
Can you explain, like, the day-to-day, and how this really isn't a one-time?
Well, it's absolutely day-to-day, and every time somebody wants to develop a piece of property that is adjacent to the system, you do remodel the system with that, you know, capability, and you do offer that information to those developers, so that they can design the system within that development, to meet whatever their, whether it be fire flow, or whether it be wastewater collection, whatever it may be. But it's a continuous process of not just mapping it the first time, because when they build that subdivision, that becomes part of the map too, and somebody's got to integrate that into that mapping system. It's a full-time job, and don't think it's not.
I'm not disagreeing, it's a full-time job once you get it, but I'm saying to go ahead and establish the SCADA mapping for the whole city, let's subcontract it out, and then once it's established, then you've got a, you know, a one or technician, or two technicians, we don't, as far as the engineering department, you know, we keep talking about budget and budget, you know, we're trying to get off the utility.
And maybe what we need to do is ask cities that may have that capability to let us visit and see how they staff it, and see what their workload is. Maybe that's an option to look at.
Well, I think it seems, sorry, go ahead. Well, I mean, I think it seems like something we need to get on, as far as getting everything mapped out correctly, so that when we do have issues, we can find and repair those as soon as possible, so that we can minimize whatever damage there is. And, you know, since there is no engineering department today, I mean, we need to move forward with having that bid out and getting whatever mapping underway.
And the mapping for the wastewater system is in that first phase of projects that I proposed. We've got one coming right on its heels with the gas system. And then we'll need to follow up with the water system, and I think we have some information on the electric system, but it's a continuous, you know, building that database, it's always needing to be maintained. We've got line locates that when you start doing this mapping system, I mean, the objective is to have all the information correct that's on the map, so whether that be line sizes, or whether that be locations, the locates that we do are an opportunity to maintain that map. And then, yeah, the technicians will spend time maintaining the map, but we also need to have people doing the modeling part of it, to assist the developers that come in. And if we start looking at the next water production site, you know, we need to know where the best place for that system is. Part of that groundwater monitoring plan was about knowing what our capacities are. So, then you start looking from that location out, you know, how do you develop your distribution system to supply that volume of water into the system? Right now, we have that very problem we're talking about with the, with the lack of one tank. We shouldn't be suffering for the lack of one tank.
Mr. Peters, I have a question for you. You know, what would your engineering department look like? I mean, are you going to have multiple, are you going to have an electrical engineer? Are you going to have to have a civil engineer? Are they going to have to have multiple disciplines within just civil engineering? You've got streets, roads, you've got sewer, water, electrical, I mean, even within electrical engineering, as you know, there's, I mean, you know, 50 different disciplines within that. And I think that's why we've always relied on contract labor, because you can just go out and get the specialty that you need, and actually see some of our contract labor in the audience here, and that's sometimes why you go out to them, because they have all this expertise in-house and...
Right.
...contract labor. So, what would your engineering department look like? How, how large would it be to cover everything that you have to cover in a city like Fairhope?
I think we need to have two engineers, one senior engineer and one graduate, or maybe engineering training type position. I think we need a few technicians, mapping technicians and SCADA technicians. And I think those four people could manage what we need to have today.
I was only right when you said a few, I wrote three, and then you said there was four people. I had, which I would have had five.
I had five, too.[874.63][874.63](laughing)
I put two engineers, and then you said a few technicians.
Well, I said two. I meant two.
I understood a few, and so when I put, you said a few, I wrote three.
I put five, man, I'll take five.
I wrote three, and I wrote five, and then you said, oh, four. Oh, well, that's even better.
But, I mean, and I understand the apprehension you may have, I'm just, if you doubt that there is a position that is full-time, that would fit into an engineering department, let's go look at places.
It's getting to a point where we're not reactionary, but being proactive. That's it. I mean, with all of these upgrades that we're doing, that alone will keep these busy, these people busy for four years, and then it's a maintenance issue after that. So, it's just...
I think we're fixing to embark on a rehabilitation program of the wastewater system. I mean, I...
Have you got a, have you done an ROI on having a department with five people? What that would save us in terms of engineering costs?
No, sir. I can tell you that we had three engineers in the gas, water, wastewater department that review utilities. And I don't remember the first project that we farmed out to an engineering firm. I mean, we single-handedly designed a water plant, had an elevated tank put in, upgraded the wastewater plant, and numerous lift stations and distribution systems, the Von Skier distribution system for water, Magnolia Springs distribution system. We provided all those loops, and had that, had that hydraulic modeling system in place to validate what we needed and how we needed to go about doing it.
This is, this is not a fair comparison for you to, for me to use. It's not fair what I'm about to say, because I don't know that even an engineering department, if we had an engineering department, could take on a design of our wastewater collection system. It's just too much. And plus, they would probably have too many things to do, so you'd probably still go out and have to sub that out. And then, the other big example, I think, and it's not fair to use it as an example, is, you know, our substation, electrical substation upgrades. It just, one or two engineers couldn't do that.
That's true.
So, there's always going to be that need for going out and hiring engineers. So, somehow, something would, some work would have to be eliminated, and then when you get down to, is it just, if it's just day-to-day, I guess I get back to some of Councilman Brown's thought, is it, you know, is it necessary? Could you, could we get up to speed on where we need to be on the mapping and the SCADA, and then have technicians that, you know, if that's all their job is, is inputting data, I mean...
Just remember, when you start managing projects, and you've already alluded to the fact that we have quite a bureaucracy here for procurement, we have quite a few hoops to jump through. Well, we also work with the State Highway Department, we work with ADEM, we work with all these other bureaucracies, and they like to have hoops to jump through too. So, just to do one, what may be a simple project, requires a hell of an effort, to get everything accomplished, and to meet the timeframes of either us, if it's our project specifically, or for development. And it's, I mean, it's not my fault, but our society has gotten to that point, but that's where we are, and that's what we have to do to manage what it takes to keep up with it. And I'm assuming you're not wanting to turn people away from development here, I mean, that can be the next step, if we want to talk about that. But right now, we're trying to manage what we have to the point that we can support development. And it just gets to the point where there's not enough time to do all of it.
Jimmy, Kevin, any questions?
I guess my only thoughts, now I'm looking at this, the mapping, the SCADA, I can certainly see the benefit of having that, that done. It seems like it could be expedited if it was outsourced, just might have access to more people to help with that, and then have one technician working full-time after everything has been established. And the other question on the engineering that I, that I had was, when you're looking at some of these projects and taking all this on, is there some liability that follows with the engineer and with their, I guess with their, you know, their expertise that would be, if you had an engineering department in the city, would the city then be taking that on, or is it already the city's responsibility?
I'll let Mr. Peters answer, I think the answer to your question is yes.
Well, I mean, I think, with any growth in infrastructure, there is a liability associated with that, but, I mean, what we try to do is make sure that what we install is prudent design standards and put in correctly, and, you know, that absorbs a lot.
I'm just wondering if that's some of the logic behind outsourcing some of the engineering when you can, is that...
Liability is a, is a component of it. I don't know how high that rate, it would certainly be one component of it, but...
I mean, I, we want to try to look at this as a team effort, where we're all part of getting whatever we need to accomplish, accomplished. And if that requires outside consultants, yeah, I mean, that's, that's great and wonderful. I mean, that's what their purpose is, but there's, when you start looking at rehabilitation of the sewer system, you can't have an outside consultant on call to come look at this every single time you find something wrong with the system. Eventually, you've got to have people in-house that can start making these decisions. And when you, if you get an annual contract set up for point repair systems, because when you start lining these sewer systems, you're not going to be able to line every section of sewer system, because there's some offset joints, and there's problems that you're going to find, whether it be in connections to laterals, or whether connections to manholes, or connections to different joints of pipe. And you've got to fix those things. And so, somebody's got to manage those contracts, and those are things you can do in-house. There may be short loop extensions that we can create in the water system, you know, we'll run a mile of water main, and it'll increase and boost capacity throughout the system, and parts of where that mile may be laid. You know, that's something we should be able to do in-house. We should be able to have the construction capability and the engineering support to get permitting and do the things that we need to do to accommodate that. We're big enough to think that we should be able to do that.
I think it just goes back that we do own all of our utilities, and we have two different things that we're dealing with right now. We're dealing with upgrades, there will be a lot of new infrastructure, and then the rehabilitation. And this is the engineer that we have right now, and he's going to be doing a lot of things, but he can't do everything. There's going to be a balance between who we hire and expertise outside when we have that need, but we do have a need every day. And to me, it's just a, looking at all of these organizational charts with an eye on how can we make it more efficient and cover ourselves more. I mean, we have eight mechanics that work on vehicles, and, you know, that's, these are depreciating items. We don't really have the people we need on assets that are everything to our city, and we just have to look in that way when we do our whole organizational chart and drill down all these departments. And we are lacking, I mean, we are very deficient in all of these utilities. And if some of y'all were, were here when we were doing the director roundtable updates, we are losing an incredible employee. And the reality is, it's a lot of stress for the people who work in our utilities, because we are so stretched. And these are things we have to look at quickly.
I agree. And we've got a great group of folks, working every day to keep it running.
I guess for me, this is just me, only my opinion, I, I put up some resistance, because I'd like to see, I'd like to see, give some specifics of what we could have done in-house, and how, you know, how it would be done better in-house versus going out and hiring engineering companies, because it's like the in-house attorney argument, it's just so much that, you know, specialty that one person has. And, and ultimately, you grow your government, and you inflate your budget, and I'm not saying that this would, but you do. It grows a budget, and you had all, you know, you're talking about adding, you know, 500,000 plus to the, and I'd kind of like to see what, what the return on investment is, you know, if you could cite some examples of things where we could have, that would have saved us. And it might be nothing, it might be not something in the past, it might be something in the future that we, that's coming down the pike, that, you know, could, they could be used on, that's going to save us, and say, well, here, we're probably going to have to put this out, and that's a million-dollar contract, so that's going to be 100 to 150,000 dollars in fees. What is that going to, you know, but if we had this in-house, we're going to run that mile of water main, or if we're going to run that mile of sewer, or that mile of gas line, if we did this in-house, look at, look at what we, what we saved. And that's assuming that that, that those people can do all of that. I mean, that's a, that's a tall order. I mean, you're talking about a lot of expertise. They have to be pretty well-rounded, in a lot of different engineering disciplines. So...
So, it's really just the next step? We talk about these things, but what is it? What, do we continue just not doing anything, or what is the next step? I mean, that is really...
Well, other than, you know, our sewer collection system itself being, you know, highly taxed, our electrical system is at, you know, near, it's very near capacity in peak season. And we know we have to expand those, but we're using, you know, engineering studies to make those upgrades. I would argue that this city's not broken. I would argue that this city's doing pretty well, and we're in pretty good shape. And yeah, we need to fix these things that we have, but, I mean, all's not broken. I kind of cringe, Mayor, when you, you kind of say that the city's, it's almost like the sky is falling, but the city is not in terrible shape. We're an awesome place.
Definitely agree with you. I don't know that these meetings are to talk about all the things we're doing right, but the things that we need to make decisions on. But I agree, we're definitely in a, we're sitting pretty, but we do want to look at how we can do things better, and that's all we're doing.
Massive growth, you know, it's unprecedented growth, and, you know, and we predicted that, you know, 20 years ago, maybe not 25 years ago, probably certainly not, 10 years ago, maybe, yeah, 10, 15 years ago, probably. Folks should have seen that.
Indications are just going to continue for the next 20.
Right. And maybe you can use some future things to determine, you know, how this, this department will service. That's just my thought. Anybody else?
I'd be curious what the cost would be to have a, you know, outside firm do the mapping for all the utilities.
Well, we're going to find out after the next council meeting, if y'all approve negotiating with the consultant we're asking to negotiate with.
But that's only one part of this.
But that's, yeah, I mean, that's really...
What part is that?
The mapping, I mean, upgrading the wastewater mapping system. That's one component of, we don't have any storm sewer mapping in place right now. Do you want to get a firm to do all the storm sewer mapping too?
Get a cost, what would it be?[1658.82][1658.82](laughing) Be a lot cheaper than hiring five people.
But you're right, losing all that knowledge you gained with somebody else not working here.
That's why, I mean, you just look at eight mechanics, should just out outsourcing that, we might.
You balance out how much of that knowledge you want to retain here, versus how much you want to let go to an outside consultant, and not have that expertise when you need it. I mean, I, I may be more conservative than y'all are, and I may think that we ought to have as much as we can in-house, but that's, that's me.
Well, there's arguments to be made for that, for sure. Institutional knowledge.
So, anyway, that would be my recommendation. We'll work on some organization charts, and then I'll look at opportunities, if you're interested in looking at how other cities do this thing that are about our size, and decide how, do you want to be the best, or do you want to just keep trying to, you know, take care of what we got when we have to take care of it? I mean, that's, that's a decision that we need to make too. How good do we want to be?
When you do, if you put together some, some cost analysis for this, I'd like to also make sure that it includes software, you know, engineering software packages are very expensive. Are they going to need some kind of technical assistant to help with, with things? Because they're going to say they're too busy to write things up, now they need a technical writer, you know, just, you know, and maybe they don't need that, but, you know, it's a lot that goes into it.
Just a blank check would be satisfactory.
It's all everything.
Sure. So, if you get one of those, let me know. We'll spend it with absolutely the city in mind.
Does anybody have any other comments on that? I mean, it's, it's a...
She and I could, you and I could talk.[1769.13][1769.13](laughing) Then I have a bunch of comments.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Gakwa, Mr. Crays.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
All right.
Good.
Hopefully, I don't have to make a habit of this.
Where'd you get this shirt?
Had it made up.
This is basically, DAWA is, oh, basically what I'm asking for is a marina software program which will only allow right now, but in the future, to grow as the marina grows, to be able to accommodate vessels making any type of transaction. But what I'm asking for now is is for a software that is is as you can see, is only three point five percent transaction. Based off of the research that I've done and as well as as purchasing has done, we all feel that DAWA is the best way to go. And then all it is is pretty much a contract right now. And everything is, there's areas to grow with this. But basically, what I'm getting at is it frees up a lot of my time since I only have two part-time positions at the marina. But if you'd like to, what I'd like you to do is turn your attention to the screens. And I have about a two and a half minute video and this will hopefully answer any questions that you have now or after. Go ahead, Jeff.
Hundreds of thousands of boaters use DAWA to discover and book directly with marinas of all types and sizes. That's why DAWA has quickly become the go-to resource for marinas looking to reach more boaters and drive more business. Let us take ninety seconds to show you why DAWA is an essential part of any marina's marketing strategy. Whether your operation is large or small, private or municipal, with transient or long-term dockage, simply creating your marina's free DAWA listing provides premium marketing exposure for your business and helps to maximize occupancy and efficiency. That means more dollars in your pocket and free time in your day. Marinas listed on DAWA see an average increase in revenue of fourteen hundred dollars per month. Some have even seen as much as a five hundred and forty-five percent increase in nearly dockage revenue. When boaters search for a destination on DAWA, your marina is featured for boaters to learn about, contact, and make reservations with. If a boater requests a reservation, you are instantly notified on any device. You'll have each boater's contact information, reservation request details, and boat specs right within the app. So you have all you need to confirm or decline the reservation request. When you confirm, you'll receive the payment automatically and the boater will be notified that you've accepted the reservation. This all saves you time and ensures a smooth and easy transaction for both you and the boater. Forty percent of a marina's reservation requests are made outside business hours. DAWA lets customers make reservations any time of day and you manage those reservations from anywhere with any internet-connected device. That's more revenue opportunities for you and immediate peace of mind for your boaters. And what's more, it's risk-free. List your marina at no cost. Our low credit card processing fee replaces any fee you're already paying each time you accept a credit card payment. And you'll never pay that fee unless a reservation is confirmed and your money's in your bank. DAWA is a key part of any successful marina's marketing strategy. Don't miss out on our network of over two hundred thousand boaters. List on DAWA for free today.
So Drew, I have several questions for you. So are you envisioning that when people pay their monthly fees, they would pay through this?
No, it's only for transient.
Only for transits, okay.
Only for transits, only for right now.
And how many how many transient slips do we have available at any given time? If they were all empty, how many transient slips do we have?
I would have at least eight.
We have eight transient slips?
Yeah. That is right now until the we're up and running at full capacity.
So we're only talking so I I'm really glad to hear that. So it's not the monthly because we had suggested just putting them on an auto debit plan for that.
And that's what I have them on.
Okay.
That's what I have them on.
Excellent.
And that's basically what it does is it's it's big with the loopers and it's good for marketing and advertisement and growth for future purposes for the marina. But some of the other sites that we did look at, Snag a Slip, of course, is a couple of thousand dollars for different plans. And then I did another one which was Scribble software, which was about thirty-seven hundred dollars. The big difference between all of these is there's only one that is compatible with Munis, that I can transfer all of my daily information from Tyler Cashier into Munis instead of having to go through about four different, four to five different processes. The other eight other companies out there, they're using QuickBooks. That's it. And QuickBooks is not acceptable with Munis.
Well, I I for only eight transient slips and it would free up your time. And we're only talking three and a half percent on each transient slip rental. And and it's the transient slip people that are gonna be looking to, oh, I'm gonna be in this area and I'm looking for a marina.
Correct.
It's gonna just be those, I think. So I don't know, folks. I think that's a pretty easy.
No, I mean, there's gonna be planned on down the road as we progress with the marina and the plans. There is gonna be a lot more transient slips. And that's gonna be our big ticket item for people coming in and going either it's one night, two nights, three nights.
I think, yeah, you know, three and a half percent. One night, one night rental pays for all the fees probably.
Yeah.
Or more than pays for.
Yeah.
Council, I'm totally in favor of this. It seems like a no-brainer.
You say there's gonna be more transient slips? Eventually, we'll open up, yes, yes. But as of right now, I have between six and eight. Everything else is pretty much occupied. But with everything else going on, I'm just trying to look at this as far as future and helping me out in progressing and building the marina.
I was just gonna say with this, let's assume that we do get a bunch more transit slips. We decide we would rather take this over ourselves. It's simpler or what for whatever reason, years down the road. You can turn these guys loose at no cost is the way I understood this.
Correct.
You know, so it's done right then if you want to take it over. So it doesn't cost is really one way or the other, to add them on or to get rid of them.
Correct. And most of them, the main ones, the ones that that I did a lot of the research with, Scribble and some of the other other companies out there, they only allow one computer and one-time software. This person, these people are multiple computers, multiple software, and there's no there's no strings attached.
So is this is this like an industry standard also for, I'm not gonna compare it to, say, an Airbnb or a VRBO. It's just like where people go to find transit slips. That alone, that alone is a huge.
It's pretty much the same concept for landlubbers.
Anybody have any objections?
It seems like the right choice out of the three you looked at.
Because the most of the calls that I've had are people sitting over at Dog River or heading towards Fairhope area or we haven't had a whole lot of loopers now because we haven't done a whole lot of advertising. But this is something that we want to get into and have do more advertising in which is everything is free. All I do is I sit down and give them a plan, tell them what I want to put on there, and they do it. Now, they make their money off larger plans, okay? Now, if we wanted to do fuel and basically large area mapping and stuff like that, but that's we're so small time, we don't need that right now. So it's transits only.
I'm here. I'm not hearing any objections. We can ask the clerk to get that on the next agenda. You have a contract we need tonight?
Yes, everything is there. There's copies of it there. Since they are such secure, what they do is I had to get them to print out these forms in which can be signed by the mayor and then of course, we can send them on to the treasurer. But they do ask that we do sign via the internet.
The, I mean, this this to me is is so straightforward that it's something that I'm comfortable walking on. If everybody would be okay with that and we just knock it out. Mr. McDowell, do you see any reason to?
I haven't seen a contract. I don't see any reason.
You gotta go through Jay.
Jay's the only one that doesn't like walking on.
I don't like I hadn't seen a contract. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, voting on a contract without our city attorney having looked at it is usually.
Yeah.
And just my general hesitation, walk anything on, yeah.
There you go. City attorney is looking at it.
If you don't feel comfortable, don't. You know, don't vote on, don't vote the walking on, that is. It's just such a minor thing. I thought we're here, we can do it.
I I don't oppose walking anything on. There are certain things I oppose to walk on. This is not one of them. So let me look at it and then I'll get back to you.
Very good. Okay. Update. I heard a little bit at the tail end of the supervising media. Update on the fuel dock?
Uh, we're waiting on the bulkhead as of Friday morning. I contacted they the Asphalt Services has the bid to go ahead and start the work. From what I'm kind of getting at, it's gonna be kind of outsourced to another individual. So they're not gonna start until April eighteenth. So that's pushing everything back, 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 back. So a fuel tank is gonna be ready probably within the next couple of weeks.
Was that custom fab?
Yes. I've gotta go up and do placement on the registers, the reels and all the other power components that we want to put in there. And then I'll have to come up with a shipping date, basically.
How about our distribution? Is that custom made or is that off the shelf?
For.
The the fuel pump?
The dispenser. Dispenser is comes from a different manufacturer.
Is that does that have to be built or?
That's already built. It's already built. And we're just waiting. It's already at the facility in Atmore. I'm just waiting for them to get to a stopping point to where I can go up and meet with the their representative from that company with the dispenser for placement and the other questions that I have.
My sense of urgency is just boating season is here.
Yeah. And that's what that's what I'm pushing for. That's what I'm pushing for as well. But other than that, I mean, we're go on anything else. So I'm at full occupancy down there right now, full occupancy with live abords. But there is a few other items that we will be bringing up here pretty soon, so.
Any, yeah, any progress on the surveying of the property for the potential boatyard lease?
The survey's been completed. We currently have to do the repairs to the haul-out slip in which we're trying to get quotes for doing that work. And then once we do that, we'll have it bedded out.
Any other questions?
Marine fuel, land diesel?
Yes, it's one single tank. Yes, a ten thousand gallon tank. It's five and five split. We've laid laid out all the drawings, have all the drawings, all the piping, electrical, you name it. Be designed. And then as well as the the Blackwater waste court pump is being manufactured right now as well.
I applaud you brought that up, Dave.
Yes.
That that'll be done soon?
Yeah, it should be sooner than later.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Discussion of clubhouse construction, Ms. Mazur and Mr. Kavnis.
I lost a bet. I lost a bet.
What, you thought Tiger was gonna win the Masters?
No, no. I'm glad to see somebody from the States won.
You shouldn't gamble, man.
No. No, I told Lance that when we ran into problems with that clubhouse, it'd be six months we'd be up and running. He told me a year and here we are. So I can tell you, the good news is, at this point, we're saving fifty-one hundred dollars. But because it's because we ran into a problem, we had a better solution for. So Lance, you can take it away.
Well, originally, we had looked at doing a composite deck out there. When we tore the existing deck off of the building, we we kind of found some things that we weren't anticipating. Some of the supports weren't in line with steel wall as a draw on the show and that was gonna lead us to have to cut back on the existing deck because the the ledge, the decorative ledge that was on the wraparound porch to begin with, you know, it cracked and fallen off. So we was going to cut back into the existing slab and we would have had to bring the composite back into the slab probably eight to twelve inches. So our deck would have started sooner than what we first anticipated on. When we were first talking about this.
Cross-section of you or that?
Don't do that to me.
Now you wouldn't hear a second word.
We first started out, you know, we were talking about doing it all concrete with a stem wall or knee wall around it and backfilling it and doing concrete. When the engineer did the pricing on it, he brought it back. He wasn't anticipating a contractor that had a a concrete mason guy and had the ability to pour concrete. So he priced it all differently. So it was showing it was gonna be an increased cost to put a concrete patio there. So as Todd and I went to talking, he said, you know, we can do concrete and make it look better. And that way, we're gonna have to overpour the existing slab on there so that cut goes away. We're gonna overpour that in and there'll just be one solid concrete patio. And so the composite deck goes away and it'll cost a savings of five, fifty-one hundred dollars.
I know that our building buddy over here is taking a look at that. What about aesthetics? I mean, how's it how's it look aesthetically?
We can stain it. They're going to, was it broom it, broom finish it?
It'd be a light broom finish, but we're talking about staining it and maybe scoring it, cutting, scoring it. The the from aesthetics, what I worry about.
There goes a five thousand.
Stamp it. Don't want to mention stamp, maybe score. But we were gonna we were gonna skim the 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 concrete block around and we're gonna plant bushes in front of it anyhow. So so as far as aesthetically, looking at it from, you know, outside looking in, eventually, we'll have bushes around it and it'll, you know, you won't really see it. It'll just be a continuous. Well, it'll be it'll have.
It'll have a stucco finish on it.
That's right. Thin coat finish on.
It'll be more durable.
Absolutely.
Definitely be more durable.
That that's.
A bit too durable if we want to expand again and say, well, we had to put four foot of concrete out there.
Then you build on top of the concrete.
That's right.
But they did start, they poured the footings Friday, just before the rain on Saturday. So we have started. We've started moving along.
So to make sure I got this straight, we're doing away with the composite deck going straight to concrete?
Yes.
And saving fifty-one hundred by the same process?
Yes.
You know, I tell you, I like concrete all the time. It's forever.
It is.
Concrete's forever.
That's that is maintaining the composite railing and.
Yeah, I was just talking about the deck, just the deck.
Has Lawrence gotten a detail of that back yet?
I have not seen one yet. But he's talking with the Choice Deck people about they have some ideas on how to connect that to the cement.
I would say that the composite would probably look pretty nice. What about what about, what do y'all feel about? I don't want to get into, you know, being a exterior consultant, but you know, what about staining that? I mean.
The composite, it comes in three colors.
Staining the staining the.
Concrete.
Concrete.
Oh, okay. That that one, we have not yet decided on a color for that because we're working.
You can always paint it up. Really good concrete stains you can roll on.
It'll be stained after a year.
That's true. You have to almost apply every year.
It needs to be sealed. If we don't stain it, it needs to be sealed.
We're not have that red peeling, worn look again. That's not gonna happen.
What about scoring? You mentioned scoring.
Scoring, you score a diamond forty-five and do you put a border around it?
As much. I mean, you think.
Popping lines and taking a saw and cutting it. I mean, ideally, when I score something, I try to incorporate it with the control joints. And that way, the control joint's kind of halfway. Looks like it's part of the scoring. I don't know if that'll be possible out there, but we'll we'll definitely try.
Or do you all need any action on behalf of council?
No, we're just filling you in and letting you know that, you know, this was a change order and we went through a flurry, but because it was a change order down and Marcus helped us with that one. So we were able to save a week's worth of labor.
And definitely, we'll speed the process up.
We're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion of the farmer's market. Discussion of the farmer's market rules and vendor applications. Ms. Botock, Ms. Crawford?
Shirley's coming in or not? Uh, so basically, we're here, um, as a formality, we wanted to run these rules and regulations, um, for our farmer's market by y'all and make sure everything looked good. We're, um, we've run this through Marcus and gotten his recommendation, um, basically just to allow these vendors, um, access to set up on city property at a 12-week, um, span during our spring and summer market and then an eight-week span during our fall market. Um, and that's in that property behind the Fairhood Public Library, um, between three to, hours of three to six. Um, and basically, we are just, um, allowing vendors who are Alabama grown producers and, um, if we do have a value-added product, like we do have a few of our, like, soap vendors or, um, anybody that isn't selling produce, um, you know, requirements that they do have Fairhood Business License and a county license and a, um, tax ID. So, um, just look over that if there's anything else, y'all.
Paige, I'm just interested in what the differences are between this new, um, these new rules and the old rules. Because I know we, we sure know every single thing that goes on in the city. We don't always know every rule that goes along with the farmer's market.
Well-
I just want that, these guys to hear the question.
We're just, we're just generalizing it, basically. We, we had in there before, um, just real specifics, temperatures that, um, food was, food was to be at for seafood or for any kind of jams or jellies and, I mean, you can get into the weeds with it. So we're basically requiring that they, um, are, are required to our rules and for the Health Department rules, um, and our Farmer's Market Authority, um, guidelines, which they just state that if they're a producer, it's Alabama grown. Um, and we just say specifically, you know, with, um, preference to Baldwin County, so, um-
So when it says, I'm going to be specific on this one, if I might. So it says a valid Alabama seafood dealer's license. So does that mean they're selling Alabama seafood or they have a, a license in Alabama to sea, sell seafood? Because what if they came in and sold Chinese shrimp with an Al-, you know, I mean, is it, does that license allow them to do that or does it prevent them from doing that?
Now, that's through the county, um, that they issue those licenses.
Okay.
So I would have to look up, I believe it is pertaining to the Gulf. Um, so I don't think that they're allowing them to come in and sell, you know, seafood from China or, or like you were saying. But, um, that's why we're trying to kind of generalize our rules, basically saying that if they are abiding by the Health Department rules and they have these licensing, um, from the Health Department, if they have the dealer's license from them, then, um, as long as they have that with them on site in case we are inspected by the Health Department, um, that's all we are requiring them to have.
So one of the, um, one of the complaints that I had heard from people that may or may not have been, uh, participating in the market was that people were reselling items that may have been purchased in a grocery store.
Correct.
And so, um, this would, this would, I guess, possibly prevent that unless they found it at a grocery store so cheap they're reselling a local item, uh, which wouldn't be real likely probably, but I, I was just, I'm more thinking about things that are non-produce, uh, related.
We talked about, one of the complications was expanding the farmer's market so long that it was out of the growing season and some people were, like, trying to fill in gaps where they weren't actually producing and they were reselling so they could stay in the market. That was one of the, one of the issues that we found.
Okay.
Yeah, but I know, under the old rules, you were doing actual site visits to farms even to check-
Yeah, and we had, we had put in there in the old rules that you could be subject to a farm visit if, like, your tomatoes were in fact in question of being Alabama grown specific to Baldwin County. So we are just, basically, we just don't have the resources, you know, in Shirley and I's department to be able to do that anymore. So as long as they are supplying us with a grower's permit and they are saying to us that these are coming out of their property, you know, I, I mean, we're going to take them, you know, hopefully for their word. Um, and if there's any in question about that, we can always call the Farmer's Market Authority and get those lovely folks from, from Montgomery to come down and take a look at their farm and say, hey, these tomatoes aren't in fact coming from-
There is a Farmer's Market Authority.
Oh, yes.
I was just thinking the same thing.
Yeah, and it's really, really strict.
It's a regulated industry.
It's very regulated, highly, which is one of the reasons we wanted to be a little more flexible. I mean, not overly flexible, we want to be fair to the, and supportive of our local producers, but the rules are incredible.
Well, then they should be in compliance with the, say that again, Alabama Farmer's Market-
Market Authority.
Authority. Should they be in compliance with that? If they're in compliance with that, they, that would cover a lot, wouldn't it? Is it too strict?
Yeah, that's, that's, we're both holding our breath. Yeah, that's, that's what we were looking at and it is really, really strict.
Some must've-
I mean, too strict, they have full, so we were talking about one city that does it, they have a full-time Farmer's Market employee that checks, that does this and oversees their Farmer's Market.
Yeah, they have a program called a Certified Farmer's Market and they issue you a certificate and there's certain rules and regulations that you have to abide by in order to get the certificate. But it would also put the liability on the city to make sure that, you know, those products are in fact, you know, what they say they are or at the temperature they are supposed to be at. So we are kind of generalizing that, um, by the recommendation, you know, of Marcus, so, um-
I, I just, the only thing I'm kind of going back to in all that is just, you know, if we have a Farmer's Market, I mean, you're there, you're here, you want to help local people, local vendors, you also have to think about you're competing with local grocers as well. And they may or may not like it, but I, I would think that, like, if they're selling, uh, fish or seafood, that we would encourage them to be selling local fish and seafood, not something that came from out of state or-
Absolutely.
Or at least out of country. Is that, is that covered in here?
Absolutely.
I believe it.
It is. I'm still trying to figure, that's why I was going back to that, that says-
I'll show you where it is.
Must have a valid Alabama seafood dealer's license.
Right here.
But I didn't know if that meant they, it, it was only Alabama seafood.
Seafood at the market must be local seafood caught in the Gulf of Mexico.
Is that, where is that?
That's on page, next to the last, yeah, the rules.
Alabama Farmer Market Bureau, Fisher's Six.
Fisherman's Seafood.
I'll check with the, um, with the county and just double check on that, but I'm pretty sure that it is specific to the Gulf of Mexico.
We don't like our shrimp with silicone injected in it.
I have to, I have to disagree with you. I like mashed shrimp on a plate and that's pretty much the only requirement I got.
But it has to be Gulf shrimp.
I don't like it that way.
So it doesn't apply to vendors that are preparing finished or value-added products such as cooked seafood? Okay.
Was there a lot of complaints about people bringing produce that they didn't produce to the Farmer's Market?
I mean, there has, there has been before in the past. Um, you know, you've got, you know, your little local farmer who comes to one or two markets and they're, you know, working their land the rest of the days. And then you've got some that, that kind of frequent four or five markets a week and have a pretty substantial amount on their tables and you kind of have to scratch your head and wonder, you know, are they really growing all of that? But, um, you know, for the most part, we've got some, we've got some good vendors. Um, and we know their products are good.
You deal with, I mean, it can get pretty heated out there when people are challenging each other and where their produce came from. They've had to deal with a lot-
Yeah, we, we have had to call the police.
Yeah.
So when it says-
I never knew behind this, you know, the Farmer's Market.
I guess playing devil's advocate, if, if I'm going out there to buy produce or buy fish, you know, I'm going, maybe I'm going for the experience of walking through the market and if somebody is not allowed to bring in something that might not be able to be grown locally during this month period or whatever, it might diminish my experience at the Farmer's Market. Just playing devil's advocate, you know? If my options are limited when I go because I-
Is there a price discrepancy between homegrown and awaygrown? I mean, why the argument? What difference does it make? If I'm selling my tomato for five cents less than this cat, what do I care where you got that tomato from?
I think it's the premise of the Farmer's Market is to support our local agriculture.
And again, it would be, but, you know, the objective is to put something out there in, in order to help the local farmers come out and do this. And if somebody wants to take advantage of that, they're not gain, I don't see any advantage to doing that if there's not a monetary gain advantage to that, if there's not one from, it's not, and while I'm actually arguing, I guess, is the point that going out there and double checking, rechecking and saying, all right, I want to determine where your address to your farm is, I'm going to drive out there and look at these tomatoes and compare one to the other. It gets a little far-fetched for what the ultimate product was, was to give some availability to local produce growers to have a place to sell the wares, basically. And, you know, I don't know of anything that you do that people don't want to sit, tend to take advantage of, but generally, the advantage is a monetary advantage.
And I think that is-
And, you know, I can see if I could get it from California cheaper than homegrown can get, can sell it for, we may have a problem there.
And that is, I think that is the issue.
And it may be, I, I don't know.
Yeah, you can get it cheaper and I think they're, I mean, I'm not, I don't know if this is a fact, but I think they're getting more wholesale prices and maybe even getting some older varieties.
I'd hate to think that we're, you know, all we're trying to do is provide an opportunity for this to go and it just keeps going over and over and over, problem after problem after problem.
Right. No, we don't want that.
So, uh, make sure, so when you were quoting that a while ago, you were looking at vendor information. That's not necessarily something that's, that's not rules and regulations, it's the rules are in there prior. And then vendor application rules?
That's, that's the old.
Oh, this is superseding this.
Correct. That's right.
I was looking at that. That's the last year's, 2017. So now I'm about to, where's 18?
The new, it's on the bottom of page three is the new one about related to seafood.
Yeah, okay.
Fishermen and seafood.
I was saying, I saw, read that twice somewhere.
Where does it, where does it say it has to be harvested and it go off to?
Oh, now that isn't in there. We-
It's got to meet the Baldwin County Health Department.
Right. Jay's looking at it in his-
And is that included in those? I, I don't know.
Are you on the bottom of page three?
Yeah, I'm actually on the top of page four.
Okay, so maybe it separated differently on here. Look at what we said.
So it's not what was stated in the other?
No, it don't- No, we're, like we were saying, we're kind of generalizing it a little bit in the updated version. Basically, if they are a produce vendor, they're required to have a grower's permit through the county extension office. If they are anything but a grower, they are required to have, um, a Fairhood Business License. Um, and they are also required, if they are-
Health Department-
Health Department Regulations to abide by the Health Department.
I see all that.
So this one on-
Specifically looking for where it says it was caught in the Gulf of Mexico.
So the one online that says, you know-
I don't think we worry about that.
The pH level of relish.
We don't have an 18.
That's the old one.
Yes.
This is it, okay.
That's it.
Okay.
Alabama seafood dealer's license.
This is one, this is two.
Correct. I think we're getting into weeds.
Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah, there's a wee bit.
About the seafood license.
As long as they got a seafood license, I mean, if, if you don't have a seafood license, you can't go down to Big Pier and catch mullet and sell it to Farmer's Market.
No, my point was, I was just making sure it was local, Alabama wild seafood. That's, that was my whole point. I mean, that was the point of the Farmer's Market, to help local, then, then I don't, I don't want our local shrimpers competing with, you know, Asian grown shrimp.
Why are you picking on the Asian grown shrimp too much for?
Because they have silicone-
I'm picking on anything foreign because I'm American.
Okay.
American.
American guy.
Anyway, I, I'd like to see the language in there that said it ought to be Al-, Gulf of Coast seafood.
Well, the same, having the same language. Might be on 17, but the same language would be nice.
Alabama Gulf or Florida Gulf? Jay?
Yeah, I like the shrimp and where they are.
Gulf of Mexico. I meant to say Gulf of Mexico. Good point. Gulf of Mexico is what it said in 2017.
Louisiana, Cajun shrimp.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a problem with me asking them to add that. It was the same thing, it was in 2017. It said seafood at the market must be local seafood caught in the Gulf of Mexico.
No, no, I don't have a problem. Do you?
I don't. I don't, one bit.
I guess, I don't know if he's asking us.
What if it's caught in the bay?
Yeah, that's part of the Gulf of Mexico.
Okay.
It's okay.
The body of water that attaches to-
Y'all okay with that?
Then we've explained it.
All right, we're getting out of weeds now.
All right. I didn't hear anything after, may I?
All right. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Councilman Robinson, you got any committee updates?
I do not for the day, Mr. [inaudible].
Councilman Boone?
Yeah, we had a personnel board meeting on April the 19th and the time has changed from 7:30 in the morning to, I think, is it 5:00 or 5:30? Do you remember?
5:30.
5:30 on the 19th. Anybody just coming, welcome, join us and come talk about the personnel.
Councilman Brown?
That report?
Probably no doubt what I got.
Okay. Councilman Conyers?
Environmental Advisory Board meets Friday at 3:00 and had meeting last week with the library and then the historic preservation has met this month as well.
And I don't have any committee reports. The, uh, department heads, I know you had a meeting, but do any of you have any reports that you really want to tell us right now? If not, we'll go into the agenda quick.
Counselor President?
Yeah, please, come forward, Mr. Johnson.
I did kind of want to brief you because we, we did give the mayor some information on Friday and, and eventually some decisions are going to be made and, and the mayor has asked for Lance to kind of kind of work on if there are alternatives. But as you know, the Nick Center has some HVAC issues and, uh, we pursued a, a pricing through one of the purchasing alliances, uh, through Train, which, uh, is, is already one of the purchasing alliances through Train, which is already pre-negotiated. And I'll just tell you, their recommendation for improvements came in at $160,000. I think Lance had originally recommended 100,000 in the budget, I think 60 got budgeted and, and that's where we are at this point in time. The biggest challenge, and I don't want to speak for Lance, but the portion of the system that has failed or failing are the two biggest air handlers that handles the ballroom, which is about a 65 under-square-foot portion of the NIC Center, as well as the fresh air supply and all those, and I'm going to butt you this, the controllers that, that regulate that throughout the whole building, think of it as kind of the lungs of the building. And to, you know, to correctly replace that equipment back to as designed but with modern technology, Train came up a price of $160,000. Are there opportunities to, to patch or temporary address it? I think Lance's opinion that we've been doing that for quite a while.
We're, we're in the, we're seeing the, I guess, what, from patches in the past, without that fresh air unit, we're just killing ourselves a little further every day. So, that fresh air unit is actually got to work for everything else to work. It's actually supplying the other units with the CFM that they're needed. Right now, without that fresh air unit, we're just sucking through a secondary return vent through the, you know, ceiling or wherever it may be. And what we're looking for is the 100% outside air coming from outside feeding those units. So, we're pretty much suffocating the system.
So, and I, you know, we, we have at least advanced that green sheet through the process, Treasury has it, the mayor has, has not had it presented to her yet for y'all to give it consideration. But, you know, kind of want to forewarn you that we're working for solutions here. The greatest challenge that the solution that we have put forward, even if, if y'all approved it two weeks from tonight, the delivery on the equipment's about eight weeks out.
At least.
Puts us into June with the contractor in doing that work. You know, the greatest concern that we have is that Jim does a great job down there, that's a high-use, high-utilized facility. And I think there's a lot of opportunities that they have for special events and renting and things like that. And, you know, the scary part is, is we don't want to be dawdling and not having a fix and it's August and there's no air conditioning in that main ballroom. That's, that's kind of the, the concern. I will tell you, the $160,000, $160,000 is a lot of money, there's no doubt about it and, but, you know, that's, that's where we are. I just wanted to kind of give you a notice. I did tell the mayor that I was willing to call in a favor and Lance hadn't heard this, this conversation yet about seeing if a mechanical engineer will come in and kind of look at it and see if he has some other recommendations or possible avenues that we can pursue. But again, it's one of those things is that we wanted to get it on the agenda for next meeting and that means we had to have all that paperwork turned in, of course, by Wednesday. And we'll continue to pursue other alternatives, but this is the best plan we've got going at this point in time.
Well, this is not anything new, so, why, why didn't we put it out for bid as opposed to just, you got one quote from Train and...
We were going, we went through US Communities, which would be a buying group through a preset.
You just say it was a preset price, but is there any, I mean, might be an advantage to putting it out for bid?
Don't do it. It's going to double.
I mean, that, again, I...
I'll be glad to do that, I mean, we can, we can get other prices. Train is, I'm trying to put the building back exactly as the building's designed. So, doing this, I'm going to keep the air handlers, their train air handlers, we're going to pull the coils out of these, these air handlers are, I mean, as big as a quarter of this room in here. So, we're going to keep the air handlers, the motors and the blowers are good. What we would do, we'd pull the coil out and change to move the condensing unit out of the way and bring the crane in and set two new condensing units. The fire dampers have been shut down so long, they have rusted in place. So, they're shut down. So, no fresh air is coming through the damper, you cannot open them. We have taken and put bars on them and tried to move them. So, they're going to have to be cut out and replaced. The controls are completely shot and that's a part of that cost, it's controls for the front-end user. And we can build on that control system with the library, we can attach stuff to it as we go. Train owns the controls in the library, I have no option to let anyone else work on that control system other than Train. So, why not go ahead and have both of our control systems with Train, you know, instead of having two different odd guys, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand that.
Does that include engineering?
Yeah, this is, the nice thing about the purchasing alliance is that you get the, they size and update to find an equipment, they spec it all out, they price it and then handle the, the actual contractor coming in and installing that equipment. So, and it's already a pre-placed bid contract, so we can use it in that sense. You know, again, I'm still going to at least try to get some free input if I can to see if there are some, some short-term options, but I think that, you know, Lance has pretty much convinced me that, that we've duct-taped and baling-wired this enough, it's, it's, it's time to do some, some major upgrades. I know the mayor has concerns that that's a big investment in this facility, you know. And again, I will tell you, the one area that I'm not an expert in is HVAC, you know, I mean, but I have learned this much in my life in public works, whether it's a roof or HVAC that's commercial, it's never good news and it's always expensive. That's the only, the only lesson I have learned in that process, so.
Watson's counsel?
We're running on one circuit and I got one circuit left in the ballroom. And I, I told myself when I got to one circuit, I was going to pull the trigger.
You're telling me, so, all the air that is heated or cooled in here is fresh air?
Supposed to be.
Supposed to be, it's designed that way?
Supposed, yes, sir.
And we're trying to recirculate it, Nick can't, and it's choking.
Alabama code states, you're supposed to have so many air changes per hour.
So, what's bringing it in? And right now, you're telling me the intake is just kind of choking?
Yes, sir. Well, right now, there's none coming in, so you're just taking whatever you and I are breathing out, we're just flipping, rolling it back over to the...
Questions?
I know it wasn't good news, but I did want to make you aware of what, what we're dealing with.
So, what, tell me what you're asking for then?
Well...
You're asking us to approve this on the next meeting? Give us a heads up that you have $160,000 expense?
And apparently...
Hundred thousand of which is unbudgeted.
That is correct, yes, sir. And that is, I, you know, the mayor has not authorized a green sheet, so, but I've had been in discussion with her, she, she had her sticker shock on, on Friday and we talked about it more today. And, you know, if we, if we can discover by the time we meet again in two weeks, say, an alternative that we can live with, we'll, we'll definitely present that to you. But this is the, a permanent fix, but it's an expensive fix. And I shouldn't say permanent, this is a long-term investment that should give us the service life that we would expect out of this unit.
What would be, what would, what do they estimate the service life would be for something like this?
On a, on a commercial air unit? I mean, if you get 15 years out of commercials, 100% outside air, you're doing pretty good.
I agree.
That being said, you're taking 100% outside air and running it through a unit, you're expecting that unit to maintain that air at 70 degrees and feed the rest of the units or 75 degrees and feed the rest of the units? So, it never gets to catch up.
Is there, is this something that our crews, you know, managed by you can maintain?
I don't even begin to have a manpower like this.
No. I'm talking just, you said the air handlers, louvers are closed and they're rusted shut.
Right.
I mean, y'all can't lube them or things like that. I'm talking annual maintenance, I'm not done my work installing them.
I've taken a grinder and cut the, the louvers out so we can move some fresh air.
No, the new ones, the new ones, we maintain them.
Absolutely. Once they go under power...
I want to make sure we're not spending 160 and then we have a $20,000 service contract to come in and, you know...
Right, the, the, put, you know... They're fire dampers is what they are. So, when the, say, say if you had a, a fire alarm, those, those dampers shut down to keep from feeding that building fresh air. So, when they cut it, when the controls came out of that building, those dampers shut. And that's where we're at.
Nobody knew it?
No.
Everybody's waiting for the doors to open with it.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to the agenda real quick.
Jack, I would like to go back, I've got a committee update.
Okay, go ahead.
If you don't mind, bike, pedestrian, a couple of members are going to meet with the mayor about bicycle safety campaign. As y'all know, cyclist was killed a couple of weeks ago on County Road 13, three feet is the rule, three, give the bicyclists three feet, please. Committee's also in favor of the back-end parking, which will be implemented shortly there on Johnson Street in between section. The Bike Ped Committee is going to host what they're calling a parking rodeo during the May Art Walk. They're going to have golf carts trying, you know, demonstrating on how the, the concept And waiting on the bike racks to be installed. And the Bike Valet was successful at the Arts and Crafts and the Bike to School Day at FES continues to see 30 to 50 students each month. So, that's it.
Thank you. Let's go through the agenda real quick. Item six, Sherry Lee, do you have your, who would speak on, who would speak to that? That's the new part, beach fees and would be you? Okay. Okay, would that be you for number seven as well, Sherry? These are things that I believe you all presented to council at work sessions. The TAP grant, number eight, would that be you or, would that be you, Richard? Okay, number nine, would be you as well? We have any more questions? Number 10, that's pretty self-explanatory. 11, who's going to tell us about why we want to terminate that contract if we ask questions?
Lance or I can discuss it.
What about 12? Would that be the maintenance bond at the soccer complex? Resend the RFQ if we have questions, who would speak to that? Tom, would that be you? Okay, that'd be Richard Peterson on 13, I'm assuming. Richard, what is Richard? Okay. All right, number 14, 15, 16, 14, 15, 16 are budgeted items and 17, we talked about this, the last one. Mr. Johnson, can you address any questions regarding 17? And would that be Mr. Peterson on number 18 or Mr. Wachena? On that underground utilities, if somebody asks questions, could you answer that, Jay? I think 19, Mr. Brown or a city attorney can answer questions on that?
Yeah.
Has to do with the bike racks? If we can handle number 20. And then 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, self-explanatory. Okay, that's it, we'll adjourn for about five minutes, reconvene, thank you.